Any make there's chairs here so for any of you who would like to have a chair, I will wait a few minutes so that if you want to take a seat, they will be happy to have you do that. So please. Get your seats, plenty of chairs. Alright, we're going to call this meeting to order. And we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now this is wonderful, so I will call our meeting. Thank you for coming out in the rain. I need a motion for a lot of readers for this meeting.
I'd like to nominate Garland Frederson, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Frederson.
Santa Claus was here last weekend and I hear you're waiting for that. Do we have a call me? Do you remember?
Yeah.
Okay. Can I ask you to read that for?
Sure. Legal notice revised, Town of Haddon, Town Meeting. All electors and citizens, eligible to vote at Town Meetings in the Town of Haddon, Connecticut, are warned and notified that Town Meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 23rd, 2015, at 6:00 PM at Fire Station Number One, 439 Saber Road, Dickenham, Connecticut, for the following purpose, item one. To vote to accept 0.32 acres of property located on the north side of Gunger Hill Road to be conveyed from Rogers Realty Company to the Town of Haddon for the purpose of providing additional road right-of-way. Item two. To vote to accept 0.06 acres of property located on the southeast side of Park Road to be conveyed from Mark W. and Ray M. Brooks to the Town of Haddon for the purpose of road improvements and permanent easement from Cheryl E. Chuba on Park Road for reconstruction. Item three. To vote to approve the withdrawal of the Town of Haddon from the Chadon Health District, dated in Haddon, Connecticut, the 17th day of December, 2015. Board of Selectmen, Liz Malardo, Robert Duval, Sean Donlon.
Thanks. Just so all in agreement, the guests who are here for it, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept that as the call of the meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions on that? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Can we make a motion?
Oh, okay.
Bill, take it.
In a good second?
Yep.
First item of business is to, and I'll handle each one of these in separate items. First item of business, to vote to accept 0.21 acres of property located on the north side of Gunger Hill Road to be conveyed from Rogers Realty Company to the Town of Haddon. So I'd like to entertain a motion to that effect.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll open it for discussion, questions and comments, and then take a vote afterwards. And I first ask, Liz, we're slightly prepared to vote. Do you have anything you want to give to us in regards to explanation as to what this is?
I'm going to refer to our engineer, Jeff Jacobson. Jeff, should we want to say?
Can I interrupt you so briefly? We had a really big crowd and people were saying so moved and stuff. Somebody's got to stand up and tell me who you are because I know most everyone, but not everyone in Ikea, Delaware, a voice company. So who made the motion?
I moved it.
Okay, thank you. And we're good, I got a second.
As a condition of renewal of the Brookline for subdivision at the end of Gunger Hill Road, the developer was required to make an emergency interconnection through the existing right-of-way extending from the end of Gunger Hill Road down to Shula Road. That's a very narrow right-of-way. It varies in width from 20 to 50 feet as compared to the town's standard of 50 feet. So in that regard, the developer was asked to convey at no cost to the Town of Haddon additional property to allow for any future improvements to that section which has already been approved.
Okay. Are there additional, any other questions or comments before we vote on item number one?
What's the payback to the developer?
What's the payback for the developer?
There is no compensation being paid to the developer for this property.
At this point, no. But doesn't that open up Shula Road for development? I think there's going to be two small driveways that will come onto Shula Road.
I don't know about any future development of Shula Road, but you know, as you're aware, Gunger Hill Road is about 1.3 miles in length. It's a dead-end road with some new subdivisions at the end, including the existing houses and the lots that have been approved. There's 120 houses off basically a 1.3 mile dead-end road. So as a condition of that approval, there was a gated emergency interconnection which would restrict through traffic to Shula Road, which is of course a concern for those residents, but then allows for safety if there's any blockage in Gunger Hill Road, which apparently has occurred in the past as far as I know. There are absolutely no plans.
That would require rebuilding Shula Road. Because Shula Road is too narrow. It was set up for the worst of the lucky days and it's one-way traffic. It would have to have two-way traffic, so it would have to be widened. Holes would have to be moved and the road would have to be widened.
There are absolutely no plans to make any further improvements beyond what has already been made for the emergency interconnection. There's been no discussion or no plans. It's proven for future planning of the town.
There's no plans right now, but there could be future plans.
If the town had decided sometime in the future that they wanted to.
That's everyone on Shula Road. You open up the road right passage between Gunger Hill and Shula Road. Anyone on Shula Road is going to be affected, all those property owners. There's going to be property in there, it's going to change to that.
And you got that building, they put in that road because his road was too narrow for your new specs because it has its taxes paid up.
I can't speak to anything about taxes paying or paid up. I have no idea. That's not my area of responsibility.
That's the reason why he did it for you folks.
But I ask you, please direct your questions to me and I'll hand them to somebody to get an answer.
The reason the emergency road went in by that building is because his road was too narrow and he was behind it on his taxes. And that was the deal you people made to put in an emergency road with him.
I can't speak to what planning and zoning may have required, but from an engineering standpoint, in my original review, there was a recommendation to provide an emergency interconnection due to the fact that Gunger Hill Road is 1.3 miles long and has 120 houses and/or buildable, buildable lots. That was the reason.
Wasn't that kind of like people flying next to an airport and complaining about the noise?
There was no one that.
They knew there was a 1.3 mile road and they put it into development anyway.
And it was a study done on that road and people said it was fine when those people went up there. And you didn't give them two points of access to get out.
And we will also assure that that gate is going to remain across there and it would not become a through there. So I'm not understanding if you're, if you're going to make the two-way road.
There is no plans to make it a two-way road. It's to accept property. Right now, the right-of-way is 20 foot to 50 foot in width.
Understood.
It's just for future consideration, there are absolutely no plans.
Just like they told us that we're putting the gate in, but we're not going to have through traffic. It sounds to me like you want to connect those two roads and how are you going to do that? What for widening the road and taking people's property?
There are no plans to do that.
What guarantees do we have that there will be no? And why any progress?
It's proven for future planning. I mean, anytime you look at these things.
But there is no future plan, so how could we be future planning?
Because if the town ever want, you know, that emergency access road now is narrow, it's steep, it has a sharp horizontal curve. If the town ever wanted to straighten that out and make it more accessible for emergency traffic, they would not be able to do so without acquiring additional property from a joint property owner. This was an opportunity for the town to obtain that additional property at no cost.
To do what?
To just have it there in reserve in case they ever wanted to use it.
Which will be when?
There are no plans, I can't tell you.
There's no plans now, but what happens is.
There's been no answers, there's been no discussion. It would be up to a future Board of Selectmen, this Board of Selectmen, whoever would have to go to a town meeting. I can't tell you anymore, I'm bowing to this whole thing.
And the thing, thing was, is when we did go to the meeting the last time, it was, we were all told that the meeting was over, nothing was concluded, but as soon as every one of us that were objecting to the emergency access road coming down through, we all left because you said the meeting was over. And what happened? You went past it as soon as we all walked out of the building.
Wow.
Yep, that's exactly what happened.
You see, the big problem here, that's the whole thing was.
If you want to talk.
This is, I have been asked and I live on.
Ed, go ahead.
This whole problem was addressed at the beginning, when Rogers Realty wanted to put in the development. There was stage one and stage two. Stage one was Brookside Development, which would tie in with stage two, which was across the street. Now, they did the entire development, not the houses, but all the roads, and they left this last item to last, to go across the street. So when they approached the wetlands, they sent a wetlands officer out and he said, oh, you rode down, made a drive down to a road, which is what you said, you can see that and travel over it. And he had said, oh, you crossed wetlands. And you're going to get rid. So, Wetlands Bureau said, well, we can't go along with that. We're not going to give you permission to cross that Brook. But we are going to insist that you put down a retention pond at the end of the road to take the runoff down the road into that retention pond. Now, if the original plan had gone through, you wouldn't have all this about Shula Road and widening Shula Road. It would have opened, taken care of by the developer and the shifting price would not come on to the taxpayers. Of course, when this is finally resolved, if this does go through, the taxpayers will be paying.
Additional questions or comments?
Yes.
The way it's explained to us at the fire department, that it's going to be a gated access road, the only time that road will ever be open is that like, let's say we have 25 trees down across Gunger Hill Road and it's the only way we can get in or we can get out with fire department equipment or ambulances or even the town trucks. That's the way I understood it when they explained it down at the firehouse. So it does not sound like to me that this is ever going to be improved or anything other than the fact that it can take, you know, the apparatus has got to get through there in case of a big emergency where we can't get through. That was the only thing that was told to us and I, so.
Wasn't there a limitation?
Ed, please. Ed, do you have a question?
A statement before the question.
Go ahead.
When they put that in, there was a limitation of 15 feet width, which would allow for emergency vehicles, but it would not allow for through traffic because you have to have plenty.
I can't speak to that. Alls I can tell you is that the way it was explained is that we can get in and out with emergency equipment. And I mean, if, let's say the road's going to be shut down for a week and a half or something because we can't get the wires up off the ground or there's trees all over the place or whatever, and those people need to get in and out, I'm sure that, you know, it's going to be like the old country road. Hey, you see your neighbor coming, you're going to have to find a place to get over the side a little bit and everybody kind of wiggles their way by, but I've never heard personally that we're going to widen the road to meet all kinds of specifications. I'm just, I don't know, I can't speak to the, the road whiffs and all of that stuff. So alls I can tell you is what we were told at the fire department, what that road was for was strictly for emergency purposes. And that was it.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, I'm wondering what does, what would the process be if the town ever did want to open it up to new traffic?
Liz, you want to address that? Or Liz, you might want to address that. What would the process be if the town wanted to?
I'm not entirely sure. The road, the dirt road right now that is between the end of Gunger Hill Road and Shula Road is a town road and has historically been so. As I understand it, and Jeff, you can maybe correct me if I'm incorrect, the grade of the slope is significant. And so if it were to ever become a through road, of which there's no plans to do so, it would have to have some kind of switchback or alternate way to get to approach that hill because the hill would be so steep. So there would be some engineering involved certainly to make it a road and then the, I mean, to actually create the road. And then the process would be to dedicate funds to such a project. And I'm not certain whether or not it would need to go to a town meeting because it is in fact a, this section is in fact a town road. So it would be a matter of widening or engineering or dedicating funding to that specifically.
Funding now.
Yes.
I think you know the history on that. This was a switchback. When the colonial vehicles came up that road, they went to the right to rest their horses and then proceeded up to get over the hill. So there was a switchback originally. And it was made specifically for the use of horse and horses.
Sure.
I just want to make a comment. The reason that I brought this to a town meeting was because I felt, I was just told that when we had a storm, there was a tree down and it was the ambulance that needed to get up Gunger Hill Road and that they couldn't because there was no other way to get through. So the reason that I felt it was important to bring this to a town meeting was simply for emergency vehicles to get through. And if we're going to appropriate, first of all, there's no plans to develop that. It is a town road, but I also feel that there's many other roads that we're all driving, that we live on, that need a lot more work to put the Town of Haddon going to approving or developing that road. So I wasn't here when all of that occurred, but the main, my main reason of bringing this was truly, I mean, it's a safety issue. I don't want to have anybody be hurt, a resident, a child, anyone, not be able to get emergency services and only have one way to get in. And if, God forbid, there's a storm, which would be when that time would arise, probably, I don't want that responsibility. I just want to know that our fire department can get in or our ambulances can get in and take care of the person that needs help. So just, that's my response for it.
Yeah, I got it. Can we move the question? Sure, there's a motion to move the question and I've been a while, but that motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. If two-thirds of us vote to stop right now, then we're going to stop. That doesn't improve the motion, that just means we're not going to talk about it anymore. We're going to go ahead and vote on it. If two-thirds of us don't, then we'll continue with this discussion. So all in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Excuse me, I need a little clarification. So everybody's saying aye, they want to stop talking about this.
They want to stop talking and then I'll go ahead and go on the question.
And where does that leave the issue?
That means it approved or unapproved. And that are the votes.
So we don't have really the answers to our questions?
Well, the reason I allow that is because there's been a fairly lengthy discussion and this question's quite frankly, seeming to be kind of going in a circle.
Right, and I've heard a lot of, we can't speak to that, so you're asking sort of vote without adequate information. I just want to be clear.
That would be your opinion, sure. Okay, so we have, we've, a motion's been made to call the question, the motion was passed, so now we're going to vote on item number one, which is to vote to accept the 0.3 acres. All in favor of item number one, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
I don't think there's any question that the ayes have it, so we're going to move on to the second item of business. Second item is to vote to accept 0.06 acres of property located on the southeast side of Park Road to be conveyed from Mark and Ray Brooks to the Town of Haddon. Now, a motion to that effect. I'm sorry, your name?
Steve McHever.
And a second?
Second.
And? Mr. Jacobson?
Yep.
Comment, so Mr. Jacobson?
Sure, I can. Park Road and Park Road Extension have been targeted by the Board of Selectmen, actually going back to the middle 2000s for improvements. It's currently an unimproved gravel surface road, Park Road. Park Road Extension is narrow and paved. Plans have been developed for reconstruction and improvement of this roadway. And one of the recommendations was to terminate a through road at the end, actually at the north end of Park Road where it intersects with Route 154, which is a substandard, a dangerous intersection. That will have, again, an emergency interconnection similar to what we just talked about, that would be gated. There was a proposal to turn around the vehicles at the north end of Park Road by putting a hammerhead turnaround. That would allow vehicles traveling north on Park Road towards Town Hall to make a left-hand turn into a short paved area, back out to the right, and then go back out on Park Road to the Park Road intersection. And to accommodate that, hammerhead turnaround that I just mentioned would require going into property beyond the edge of the existing right-of-way. The town talked with Mark Brooks to see if he would be willing to convey property to the town to allow that hammerhead turnaround, which he agreed to do. That, no compensation to him.
Are there questions or comments on this side?
Yes.
My name's Jason Brown, I live at 46 Park Road. My question is, is there any hard data to suggest that that north entrance really is dangerous? I've lived there for 20 years and never heard or seen of any accidents or challenges where right across the street at the post office and Town and Country Nursery, there have been accidents just pulling onto 154. So I'm a little, I'm opposed to closing that end of the road. I'm not interested in it. There's, there are drainage issues and it's a narrow area. I'd prefer to just make it a one-way on, or from 154 on the Park Road. I think that would be fine and would leave it open for emergency access. Is there any data that shows that it is a dangerous intersection?
Yeah, my professional obligation as a professional engineer, anytime a major road improvement project is undertaken is to advise the town of any deficiencies or any safety issues. Clearly, that intersection does not meet any of the town's design standards for intersections. It's steep, it's at a very acute angle. As you go up there, you're kind of looking up in the air, you're looking back, shoulder to the traffic that's going northbound on Route 154. So my recommendation was to close it.
So there isn't a hard data?
That is the hard data. It doesn't meet any current design standard.
There's better than any accidents there than we know.
I don't know.
Well, by that logic, we should close Warren Hill too.
I think if any reasonable person in the room here tried to go out the north side, excuse me, tried to go out the north end of Park Road Extension, look over their shoulder and try to safely get on the road, it's just, you know, the town can do whatever they want. My obligation is to tell you when you have an unsafe condition, that is an unsafe condition.
Okay, and by closing the north end of Park Road, we exceed our full size of regulations?
That's correct.
I think I follow that daily. It is challenging in that you have to turn your head and. You certainly don't want to make a turn to head south on 154 from that exit, but to enter 154 to the north is, I've never had an issue with.
Alls I can tell you is it doesn't comply with any type of design criteria at all. And that's my obligation to advise the town of that.
Yeah, just so, to clarify, we're actually not voting on whether to make it one way or to close it. You're voting on the hammerhead turnaround. And even if you did make it one way, you would still want a hammerhead turnaround for any trucks or deliveries that would go to those last few houses. So technically, you're voting on the hammerhead turnaround, not closing the road. And I would definitely suggest keeping the discussion open with the Board of Selectmen, with the town engineer, and also with public works on those issues. But again, it's just for the turnaround.
Any other questions or comments?
Move the question.
I got it, entertain this one last.
Planning Zone Commission recommended that an emergency gate be placed there. Does the print show that?
Yes, they have. They have been revised to do that, wasn't it?
Other questions or comments? But if I understand that the issue that's present before this body has nothing to do with the gate, it only has to do with the hammerhead, is that correct?
It's the 0.06 acres of land that's needed to construct the hammerhead.
So, so just to follow up, then there is no gate at the moment. There's no present plans to put the gate at the moment. And that intersection is still, despite perhaps the recommendation, is no public intersection. And this gentleman, Mr. Brown, I believe his name is still coming out as he pleases, even after this call, is that correct?
Yes, right now, there is no gate, there is no restriction on that intersection. If the road is constructed, the plans do show a gate, it does show an emergency interconnection and it wouldn't allow abnormal through traffic.
But we are not talking about the construction of the road.
No, we're not.
And we are not talking about putting up the gate. And those issues are probably within the purview of the Board of Selectmen, not necessarily a town meeting.
That's correct.
Yet, if we accept the property, we're essentially accepting the closure of the road.
Or at least that option is open. We are just accepting, the vote tonight is just to accept the deposit.
I understand. And I understand the implications of it too.
Why has it, as Lenny Waller pointed out, Corrieville Road, the only guy that killed pulling out Corrieville Road onto St. Mary Road many years ago. I would refuse to use Corrieville Road going north. I'll go down south, but I won't ever use it. Kind of a really bad memory. Why are we not just making the roads one-way? How simple is that? One-way?
Have to talk to Liz.
I mean, you know, there's one-way streets all over the world. Like, we could have.
And I think that the town, so for the record, I'm Liz Glidden, I'm the town planner. I think the town could do a comprehensive safety examination of the roads. I think the town could do a comprehensive safety examination of the roads. So far, that really hasn't been done. What triggered this was a paving project on Park Road. And Jeff, if I am correct, so that because it's being paved, that triggered you to look into the safety issues and everything, and that's what brought all of this to light?
I mean, it seems like we're going, we're jumping through hoops for no reason at all. Why have to put a one-way sign up and we're done?
What's the cost to the town of putting in that turnaround? What's the cost to the town of putting in that hammerhead turnaround?
The hammerhead turnaround is probably fifty feet by twenty-foot paved section.
No, it's not, because if it goes through and you look and we get the gate and we get everything, it's paving fifty feet of turnaround, it's installing the gate, and it's the rest of our lives paying the town crew to go down there every time it snows, open the gate, and so that we have access. So it's overtime to the Public Works Department. After the storm is done, go down there, clean up the mess, because we gotta have access. We promised the people there access. It's the same argument we just had on Number Hill, except in reverse. We want to open Number Hill and close Park Road?
Yes.
I don't know, I don't know.
What's the cost of two one-way seven?
Other questions or comments? Yes, remove the question. I'm gonna, now I entertain that for just one minute, because we've had a fairly short discussion on this. Other questions or comments about item number two? Got a comment, thank you. Marty Wyatt, fifty-eight Chatham Road. We have one of those lovely gates down at the bottom of my driveway. It's been stolen before. They had to redo it again with a pipe and a big sign hanging off the end of it that said, "Stop." So all that money spent on gates, somebody took both of them from both ends of that. And that's what you're planning on doing to these folks too. I'm just referring. Other questions or comments from anyone? If not, then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor of item two, to vote to accept the point oh six acres, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I'll ask for a show hand, that was, I think the ayes have it, but we'll make sure. So all in favor, please say, I can ask Tony, would you please act as a teller and counter? And Ray, would you be willing to as well? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Twenty-seven, forty-four, twenty-seven.
Okay, that passes. Item number three is to vote to approve of a draw of the town of Haddam from the Chatham Health District. I'll...
Oh, you missed a, there's an item underneath the marking where you wrote something about Sherrod. Sheba, she has property in Park Road as well in Eastham.
But that's all part of the same thing.
Is it?
Yeah. There's one item, it's those two things.
Okay. My mistake.
Item three then is back to the Chatham Health District, the item of approving withdrawal. Liz, you want to explain this exactly, what that is all about, and we'll ask for a motion.
So currently, we belong to the Chatham Health District, and we will continue to belong to the Chatham Health District until June thirtieth of 2016. If the town of Haddam is considered to no longer be part of the Chatham Health District, we need to give notice to the Chatham Health District by December thirty-first of 2015 by a town meeting, which is why we're holding you're part of this meeting. So what I am requesting is permission, or a town vote, because I need to know how the town feels about this, an opportunity to be able to write a letter to the board of the Chatham Healthcare, or Health District, sorry, and let them know that the town of Haddam is looking at options and has an intent to withdraw from being part of that district for December, or I'm sorry, June thirtieth of 2016.
Okay, do we have a motion to vote to approve the withdrawal from the Chatham Health District?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second. We got Jonathan Sibley, who's second, Sam?
Okay, I'll open that up for questions and comments.
Gail Menzel, I have two comments, professional and personal. Professionals, I'd gone to the farmers market and gave them, and this year, the Chatham Health District imposed regulation on us, and it wasn't, it wasn't well explained to us at all. They charged the market $250, which we had to really scrape to come up with. And they were not, they were really hard to get in touch with, they never returned calls, they didn't explain forms. So this relates to, I'm in favor of withdrawing for that reason. And I'm sad to say that, because I voted in favor of us joining them a few years ago, because I thought it would save us money and serve us, but it hasn't really worked out. They scared away vendors from our market by just imposing regulations. I think that, armed and opposed, say by Killinworth or Durham, where the same vendors go. And the vendors are fine, they don't have health issues. It was just that CHD decided to go beyond what the state health department requires. And personally, we had our septic system replaced this year. We found that Chatham was impossible to get in touch with, that we'd call them and it would take weeks to return our call, and they'd say they'd come inspected, they couldn't show up. And it was just elongated painful process to deal with, so I'm in favor of withdrawal.
Other comments?
Yeah, if we do withdraw, do we still need some other form to handle it, and what would that be?
So we are mandated to handle that, so the state of Connecticut does mandate that we have a Department of Health. And I've been looking at other options for us, whether we join another district or we have our own health department in the town.
We hand in that letter, saying that you guys voted on to do that?
Yes.
And hand in the letter, don't find that we're gonna be dropping out?
Yes.
And you don't find anything that's suitable?
Yes.
Does that mean we still have to drop out, or?
We can still stay part of the district.
You can still change your mind, okay.
Recently, my son called the house next door and had Chatham Health District, had to deal with Chatham Health District for installing a septic system. And we found it very difficult to get in touch with them, to have them get back to us. We had records on file prior to the installation, when they came out and they did the testing for the D-hole and the septic test, and they had lost the records, they were no longer in their records. A person left abruptly, and we had a part-time person that we shared, with Killinworth come in, I think it was like one and a quarter days a week, and she had problems finding the information. Even though I had copies of it in emails from the prior person that was there, she wouldn't take them into consideration. And it held up construction for like two weeks, which set us back considerably, because we ended up in a rainy season, who put a few foundations in, which set us back almost a month. If everything had fallen together on time, as it should have, we wouldn't have had a problem. So I'm definitely in favor of replacing.
Harlan, Liz, could you please, could you please explain the financial aspect? I know, and I go along with everything that everybody said so far, but explain how much it's actually costing us and what it costs for permits, because that has increased substantially since they were launched.
Okay, so right now, the town pays in to be part of the Chatham Health District, seventy-eight thousand, I believe it's eight hundred and forty dollars. I could be off by a very small amount of money. In addition, on average, over the past three years, Chatham Health District has taken in for fees that stay at Chatham Health, the town does not get part of these fees, about sixteen thousand dollars. So if you add the two of those together, we're paying, whether we're paying out or what they're collecting, Chatham Health is receiving about approximately ninety-six thousand dollars a year for the services that they provide. I met with the temporary director, interim director, yesterday, along with Liz Gooden, the town planner, and Haddam is receiving eleven point nine percent of the services that they provide.
I'm sorry, Liz, I know that app, the director, Don Mitchell, he said that you are eleven point six percent of our population.
Population.
They receive somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five percent of the number of services.
Liz, is that, is that it now? You're starting to investigate or pursue some temporary fill-in or part-timer? So we'll be going down to probably a part-time, because obviously, we're not that busy anymore, that we need this full-time service. So you're pursuing that?
I'm not pursuing a temporary, no, I'm pursuing a permanent fix.
Yeah, please.
And I've held a number of meetings and planned to.
Good, good.
Steve Bailey, Hidden Lake Road. I was looking at the December fifteenth special meeting, I'm kind of torn on this, I don't know much about the Chatham Health District, but it says that several residents had several questions, of which Malardo stated she would have more information, numbers at the town meeting. I'm a little disappointed that there wasn't more information available, because I think we're kind of blindly making a decision at this point. I know we can go back after six months. One of my questions is, how much notice do you have to give to get back into the district? Could we tell them June twentieth?
Yeah, but I wouldn't, I mean, we're not gonna make the decision, I'm looking to have a final decision made at like, I think I've done no later than April fifteenth, because I don't think it makes sense to wait till the hunting hour to get everything together.
Sure. Some of the research I did very quickly, it looks like Chester and Middlefield share sanitarium. Middlefield budgets about a hundred and twenty thousand for it. Durham appears to have a full-time health department, they pay a salary of eighty-one thousand, that doesn't include benefits. Killinworth, who probably would be the logical choice to partner with if you go down that road, budgeted about fifty thousand for the sanitarium and public health, that doesn't include fringe benefits of about one percent. Essex has a point eight seven five FTD, they pay about a hundred and four thousand for their sanitarium, or their health department, I should say, about ten thousand for a sanitarium to go around. Westbrook has a director of health at about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. So I would look at it, at Mustard's article, he mentioned some of these towns. So it sounds like Chester and Middlefield already work together, so I don't know if they would want a third wheel. Something like Killinworth would be the logistic choice. I did some more research, funny thing, in 2011, I don't know if you talked to the first selectman, you know, Killinworth? In 2011, they had a very large meeting about joining the Chatham Health District, that they decided not to, and they've gone with their own sanitarium. So I would just make sure if we do go with Killinworth, that they're still committed to doing their own thing. There's also seven other towns in the Chatham Health District. There's eleven point seven full-time equivalents in the district, they have seven sanitariums and one nurse. Some of my questions, is there any other towns looked to leave any time recently? I couldn't really find anything. Is Portland or East Hampton, anyone having discussions to leave before the year?
I don't know. I mean, we had a board meeting, I mean, our chair was aware that we were gonna have a town meeting, and I think each of those towns needs to make those decisions for themselves. I have spoken to Kathy, you know, me and Killinworth, and I actually have met with the director of health, me and Killinworth, awesome.
Actually, I have a few more questions. We have a public health department?
Let me, yeah, a couple more if there's still time to settle that, okay? Yes?
So is it my understanding that we hire our own person, have our own in-house public health? Those fees, that's sixteen thousand dollars, which as we know, building is at a all-time low, but those sixteen thousand dollars would go into the town of Haddam's pocket, not into the pocket of a...
Subcontract.
Of a health district, yes. And my second question is, I understand what you're saying about having, hooking up with another town to do this. It seems that there's enough towns around us who have done it. According to Middletown Press article, that the Chatham Public Health is bankrupt. They don't have any money to support themselves, and that they were looking to the town of East Haddam to fund their coffers, to submit their salaries.
He's campus.
Yeah, he's campus, to fund their salaries. Do you know anything about this, is it true?
I actually have received an email from the interim director of the Chatham Public Health, not the interim director, I apologize, the board, from the board of directors, not the interim health director. A week ago, and stating that East Hampton had repaid itself. Now you have to understand, no fees were taken back. East Hampton has been acting as a bank for Chatham Health since its inception, as I've been told. And it was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars that the town of East Hampton had forwarded to Chatham Health in order to support to pay bills. And I received an email stating that due to East Hampton paying itself back a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which is their money, they don't want to be the bank anymore, that there was ten thousand dollars available in the account in order to pay roll, and that we were asked that our payments that were due to Chatham Health for January for the next quarter, if we could make them sooner than later. There also is an issue with the state of Connecticut, DPH, held back on a curb capita grant money that needs to go to Chatham Health due to an issue with the previous director of health. As of yesterday or the day before, those, half of those funds were released. I believe that was about thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that is what I can tell you, what I know.
So it seems to me that this is obviously not a very well-rounded business to begin with. And why would we want to connect ourselves with somebody who loses money?
Harlan, I'd like to suggest that Don Mitchell, the acting director, actually speak, because I think he'll answer a lot of questions, if you feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, well, what, other questions and comments? I think, Phil, I don't know if you saw...
I think the, the question on the table there is the service we're getting. There's what, close to eighty thousand that the town puts in, and with fees, the sum total being about ninety-seven thousand dollars. And just about every business person I know, to include myself, has had some pretty ugly experiences with them. And people not getting any service, so if we're arguing that we're gonna pay maybe a hundred and four thousand for a sanitarium, or it might be a little bit more, but at least we're getting what we pay for. We're not getting what we pay for.
Joe?
Cheryl Haas, yeah, I'm a member of the Board of Finance. I also have worked in a health department for many, many years, I actually worked for the town of Essex. I was a big supporter of joining the health district. Tony Bondi and I had many arguments. At that point, I think the town of Haddam was in a very different place, where we were using Tamal, the town engineer. I think it's very important, I think, I hear what people are saying about the customer service issue. I think that's a big issue, because that is what people see when you approach a health district or a health department, or any government service, it's customer service. It just when people, I think, obviously, warrant public hearings, I think we need to also look at that financial impact. I think we stand in a good position with Thad, the past director stepping down, that the district is in a position to hire a new health director. Those are discussions that obviously the board with all those other towns, I hope they're going to look at that. I don't think there's anything fraudulent happening within the district. I mean, they are audited, just like every other state agency... are audited, just like every other state agency that are overseeing towns very often in districts, and choose a town within that district to sort of manage or oversee those accounting practices. Public health is a broader thing, or a broader aspect, other than just food service and septic systems. Obviously, that's what we see. There's a lot more that happens, and is very costly to the town if you come as to a standalone health department. There is the emergency planning services that need to occur with that. Communical diseases, these are things that you and I don't see, that are private conversations that happen between a health director and the public. Daycare inspections, follow-up cases, a lot of these things require a phone call within sixteen hours, twelve hours, twenty-four hours. When you start to share services with towns, I get very nervous about double-dipping. Pick up the paper, you see it every day. I'm not saying that they're not cost-effective, I'm saying that we need to be very cautious moving forward in taking those types of actions, when you start to share health directors and you start to share sanitarians. So I just want to sort of, there's more to public health than your restaurant inspection, and I hope that there will be a lot of options presented, as were when we first had that option to join the district.
Jim?
I'm Jim McPhee, from out of Knuckle. I speak partly from my years of experience being married to the president of the Haddam Fair. I've had to borrow a lot of services. Services we've gotten from the town, by and large, over the years, have been quite good. It was a step down when we started having to deal with the Chatham Health, this was our second half, which I've heard some of. Personally, I object to getting a bill sent to a resident for thirty-five bucks, carrying their fee for having a new septic tank pump, which I've done regularly, which I paid for a bunch of my own money. There's no value received, and I don't know who resident it is, so we don't really pay it.
All I just want to point out is that we're voting on option. We're not voting on that we're getting the hell out, excuse me, getting out, but we are providing ourselves with an option. I like options, so that rather than waiting just another year before we can do this again, so that if for no other reason, perhaps, if, if Chatham miracles happen and turns into the model agency we all like to deal with, so be it. But if it doesn't, we're in for another year. All I'm saying, we're voting on an option.
Liz?
Hi, my name is Gray Bogdan. I used to be the owner of Swinkridge Market Place, just changed its name since then, it's on a corner of Route eighty-two, eighty-one rather, and Route one fifty-four in Tylerville. I had a laundromat in that particular shopping center, and I got involved with, with the Chatham Health District, and you do the town, between them and the town, they completely shut that laundromat down. And they removed laundromats from being, any laundromats from being established in the town capacity. And we're a pretty, pretty high-paying town. You know, we've got people that rent apartments, they need the laundromats, they either have to go to Deep River, or they have to go to Midtown to get to a laundromat. I think it's pretty bad when we have a town that can't have a laundromat in it. Today, with super-septic systems being developed, and what I mean by that, and new engineered septic systems, I feel that involving someone like the Haddam Health District to come in and give you approval to put in a laundromat is almost impossible. And, you know, I would, I would seriously look at, I think, I think it's important that we, we look at re-establishing laundromats in town. I have nothing to do with the shopping center way anyway, I sold it, so I'm not here speaking for myself. I'm speaking for the town, and I think, and I feel, that this town, as a town, at least needs one laundromat, and we don't have it.
My name is Jeffrey Thursball, my wife and I own the, me and Maya, Brainerd House, Bed and Breakfast on Sacred Road. When we put the B and B in, we were given a pretty rough time by the Chatham Health. And he was, he was literally rude, nasty, ignorant of the regulations, told us a whole raft of things that we needed to do in order to open the B and B, which I found ridiculous. Went and did my own research, found out that every single thing he told us, bar none, was wrong, went back to him, and he wasn't very receptive of what I told him, but agreed to do his own research, and, and then concluded that he was wrong, and we didn't have to do any of those things. So aside from holding up the launch of our business, you know, he was nasty, which he didn't have to be, and he was just totally ignorant of what even the regulations were. So, you know, to be paying this kind of money to an agency that doesn't even know what they're regulating, I find outrageous.
Lori Maggi, my husband is a participant in the Haddam Lions, and they do a lot of charity events where they cook and fundraising, and their money goes back into our community. Chatham Health has been horrible working with them. So that, and then also personally, we also have had problems with them with our septic issues. Also, I was at the chamber meeting seventeenth of December, and at a bridge meeting, and I do believe, speaking to your question, are other towns entertaining the idea of pulling out, and yes, I believe East Tatum is entertaining it as well.
I would just like to make a very quick comment, I haven't had much to do with Chatham Health, so I don't have a super opinion of yes or no, but sitting here, I haven't heard one positive comment about Chatham Health, and I was, would like to direct to Harlan. If someone has something positive, say, let's hear it, otherwise, let's vote.
I will turn up to that one positive comment if it's, you're the director. But I'm the job a week now, guys. There's a lot of inaccurate information, although I don't think it's anything really inaccurate. Part of the gentleman who had somebody coming or fill in, that was my fault, it was very inconvenient, I had a heart attack, I wasn't around, and they had somebody to go in for me. People working around.
Speak up, please.
I can't hear you.
Speak up. I, I will try to speak up. I don't have a real big booming voice, but in any case, we do try to move the parts around that we can. We do not have seven sanitarians. We currently have four, and we are hiring a fifth. In terms of some of these other departments and what they spend, not entirely correct that Durham has for eighty thousand, which is their sanitarium, that doesn't take in their health director, who I believe is a doctor, and that's what's called a part-time health department. In Connecticut, there are three different kinds of health departments. There's full-time health departments that have a full-time director and staff in a town, or a city. They have part-time health departments that usually have a full-time sanitarium, sometimes a part-time sanitarium, and they have a part-time director, usually a local doctor, but could be somebody who's their master's in public health. And then health districts, they have a director of health, can be a doctor working there full-time, or somebody who's on PH, and then they have a department around them. In terms of our staff, we do have other things in there, we do have a public health nurse, we do have an emergency preparedness coordinator, we have a health educator. These are people that are going out, they're doing programs on breast health, they're doing that on cancer prevention, lots of programs that are going on that you're not hearing anything about. You're hearing about septic, you're hearing about wells, you're hearing about food service. These are areas where we have to be the regulatory official. I'm sorry, but I don't know any regulatory official that regulates me that I particularly like. I don't expect you to like me. You don't have to like me. We have a job to do, we, I'm supposed to do it rudely, so if somebody is doing it rudely, I want to know about that personally, so we can do something about it. We had no meeting with anybody except this lawyer, I guess, yesterday. So not a lot of time here, I come on the job last week, this is happening. I believe that your vote, while intended to be to explore the option, is to leave, because part of the reason that the health department, state health department, put in that provision, was so that health districts wouldn't be ambushed when they're doing their budgets, which is right now. It's not going to come up on April, and then we're going to be able to scramble and redo our budget, we either have to know you're here, or you're not. It's important, there are a lot of services performed, if you don't know, there's things that, when we're talking about regulation, we talk about some of these fairs, if no one was ever inspected at a fair before, and now they're inspected, how does that feel though? Oh, I never had to do that before, I don't like that. I agree, I probably feel the same way, but it is what we're required to do. We are following the state regulations. It is not our choice whether to follow the regulations or not. When we're having septic systems going, we have to do the requisite testing, we have to do the requisite inspections, we have to do all of the inspections, make sure the thing is done right. I look at that as, we're not better than the installer, we're quality-controlled for the installer and the homeowner. We're supposed to make sure that they're following the code, getting it right, and times that I've inspected and I've found something wrong, in my experience, the installer wants to know that, because they want to fix the problem before they back them. So we tell them, they fix it, easy. Are there things that are contentious? Sure, as there have been contention about Chatham needs to see soil testing, that we've done twelve years ago. In some cases, we don't really know the quality of the observation at the time, there's times that we've gone into subdivisions and we've seen that the testing really was lining up pretty good, and then we said, okay, that's fine, the rest of them, we go. There's times that later, question, well, we did a few more. I know you've probably got a lot of questions, but I really think, and Liz, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but I think your vote tonight is either be in or go. I don't think you get the time afterwards to consider, because budgets are going to be drawn. There are no other towns, at the last meeting of the Board of Health, they asked point blank, is any other town considering leaving? The answer was no.
There are ten, there's one or two more comments, and-
I don't have to like the inspector, I'd like to, but I don't have to, and I don't mind being regulated, I think we run a top-notch organization, we fail all the laws and regulations, but when somebody tells me, in their most officious manner, what the regulations are, and they are not a little bit wrong, one hundred percent wrong.
I heard you a hundred percent.
Okay, and that tells me, you don't know, not you personally, your organization does not know what they're doing, and that does not get my vote of confidence or my tax dollars.
I'm sorry, lady next to Liz.
I'm Candice Cassell, and I was the town representative on the Chatham District Board of Directors when we first joined, up until when Melissa came on board and wanted the position. And I would like to say, one of the biggest problems in this town, I've been a resident for thirty-eight years, is that the health district came in and started paying attention to the state laws. Now, rudeness is inexcusable, returning, not returning phone calls, inexcusable. Following the laws that the state of Connecticut has set forward is what we should have been doing for many, many years, and unfortunately, and again, I've been here thirty-eight years, the good old boy network was in play, things were rubber stamped, we had health directors who were part-time physicians, getting a three thousand, five thousand dollar a year stipend, who knew nothing about wells and septic, I mean, it was really piecemeal. So I think, no matter what the vote is, it's not going to go back to the way it used to be. Even if we have our own part-time or full-time health department, I think the town has learned there are state rules and regulations, and we need to pay attention to them and abide by them. I mean, I, some of them are a pain in the neck. I personally would like my adult children and my grandchildren to grow up in a world where we're paying attention to failing septic systems, and unsafe water to drink, and just taking care of the environment. So, again, just to make it clear, we're not going back to the way it was. You know, I have feelings pros and cons about all of this, I can see, I can see both sides to the argument. The only other thing I want to say is I've always felt like we were kind of, and I, and I used this term with Liz the other day, the poor stepchild, because we're the only town in Chatham Health District on this side of the river. Time after time, there were programs, educational programs being offered, but they were planned after a board meeting, before the next one, and I would say repeatedly, there's no publicity in this town, just let me know, I will get the publicity out. So I think in the educational aspect, we've missed out on a lot. Short of that, personalities, I know there have been issues, because I've had to deal with a couple of people in town, unsafe housing issues and whatever, and there have been people who were not fun to deal with, but no matter, when you deal with the public, you run into that, shouldn't have to, but it's a reality. Thank you.
Sure. There's a motion to call the question, and we've had probably a half an hour of discussion going on, and I'm going to add one. Same as before, it takes two-thirds to just stop the discussion. So, first off, do we have a second?
Yes.
You made the motion, sorry.
Steve Bailey. Thank you.
Who's on the second? Okay, you're good. So all in favor of stopping the discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, then that brings us to voting on the question, the question is, do we vote to approve the withdrawal from the Chatham Health District? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, ayes clearly have a second. I believe that's it, right? Eric Henn, motion to do a jury.